Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, January 13th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting. In accordance with the provisions allowed by the Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the January 13th, 2022 public meeting of the Planning Board will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. Do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash. The first item on our agenda tonight is the continued site plan review of 183 Rhode Island Road, which is known as the Asswanson Golf Company, also known as the Barron Hills Country Club, or the Barron Country Club, the Barron Hills Golf Club, sorry. Who would be here, well, actually, before we do that, I just want to do a roll call of attendance. I have Peter Conroy for the Planning Board present, I have Barbara Mankowski present, Michelle McEckern present, Jack Lynch present, and then I'd like to welcome our new town planner, Mark Resnick. He is present. We have our clerk Kathy Murray is present. If anybody else is called upon to speak, I'd ask that you please state your name for the record. So moving on, site plan review for 183 Rhode Island Road.
This is Gregory Drake from Outback Engineering. We have revised the plan according to the last meeting from comments from the Planning Board and the Fire Department and the Open Space Committee. I don't know if you want me to try and share the plan, the revised plan, or we can just go through the changes?
Yeah, if you want to do that real quick, that would be great.
The changes, basically, we moved three of the, the Planning Board had a a comment that the, you know, whether we give ADA across the aisle, so we moved. If you want, I can try and share the screen, so you could see that.
Yeah, why don't you, for the record, just so everyone else is following along from home can see?
Alright, everybody can see that?
Yes.
Alright, let me go up a little bit. Basically, the last plan had the three ADA spaces here, we proposed them over here. We had moved them from over here to get more parking. And the Planning Board, one of the Planning Board members questioned as to whether you'd need a crosswalk across that, and after doing some investigation, and we decided that we'd want to get everything a little closer to the entrances, the function entrance and the new restaurant entrance, so we moved one over to here and two over to here. And that way, we don't have to have that crosswalk across the aisle and have eighty people with disabilities move across the aisle, and it's, it's actually close to the entrance, which is more closer to code anyways. So so we did that. We also, per the Fire Department comments, we they were commenting that the hydrant out front and the sprinkler connection were both had too much landscaping around, too high, so that we were going to modify the landscaping around those items, so that they'll all be low growing and always be visible when the fire, the fire department has to come. They'll be able to see that. And let's see the, let's see if I can move this down a little bit. We added the extra entrance over here that wasn't on the plan before, per the Route 79 improvements. Per that plan, that entrance has been added. Also, we did not diminish any of the curbing or any radiuses coming in per the Fire Department comments, and improved the main entrance, which was an issue for both delivery trucks and, and fire trucks, it was too tight, so we made the radiuses wider there. And by adding the parking in here, we've made the much more pavement area around the circle as well. And then the Open Space comments was they requested that there be native plants installed in all the new landscaping, and we have we've got that on there, a note on there saying that any new planting will be native plants as well. And then the town planner, new town planner gave me a call and asked about a fence that actually isn't shown on here. Was asked if it was part of the original approval, and I talked to Bob Mather, and he said, no, that that wasn't part of the original approval, the fence is over here between the neighbor and the parking. And that didn't happen until after the the parking lot had already been put in, and the neighbor was, was a little unhappy. And so the golf course actually put that in as part of, you know, as after the fact, so. But I believe he had the question.
Oh, is that still something that would be required? It may have been overlooked in the first site plan review, because it is a residential property abutting of business? And that's a standard in Lakeville?
Um, maybe it was at that time. But it wasn't part of the approval, I, they said that, you know, if you if we, you know, part of this approval is to repair that fence, they would be open to that. So.
Okay.
Could be a condition of the, of the approval.
Okay, Mark Resnick, would you recommend that be a condition or?
Yes, since the golf course has, has stated that they did install the fence, even if it was after the fact, to provide some screening and buffering for the neighbor. So it would be I would recommend that we added as a condition of the approval that they repair or replace the fence as needed, so.
Thank you. Yeah, so it looks pretty thorough that you made all the other changes and addressed all the concerns of all the other planning board members, as well as the comments from everybody else. Meaning Fire Department, Open Space, and I think the Board of Selectmen had a comment about the Route 79 project, which looks like that was more geared towards Fire Department comments. Do any Planning Board members have any other comments? Before we move on?
I have a question.
Barbara, go ahead.
I apologize, because I haven't been present for a couple of meetings, but in this front area where, well, you can't see my mouse, but where you're, when you're entering and exiting the main entrance, the visibility from that lot has been, is horrendous, I mean, it's historically horrendous. So will the new plantings that are going to be going in there allow for better visibility? I realize you can't control the adjacent parcel. But it's, the vegetation all there needs to be really low to allow as much visibility as possible.
You're talking at the main entrance?
Yes.
Yeah, they're, we, they're gonna widen the radiuses as well as take out the, there's some shrubs and stuff that are there that are gonna be removed, and then the big, there's a boulder that says La Barrera, that's gonna be moved up into the circle. So it's gonna open that area up quite a bit more than it is now. So yeah, that is, because they're coming up the hill there, that is a, an area that we're made aware of as well, so.
My family leaves there and I get nervous every single time somebody pulls out. We take a left, it's, it's a dangerous spot. My other question is for our new planner, just a quick question, because this plan is coming before us again, so this area that we have that's adjacent to where the fence is that we've been talking about. Normally, there would be a buffer zone there, right? That would have not been approved on the original plan.
Yeah, in, in most communities, you would have required some sort of buffer. I mean, I think that's why after the fact, the, the golf course did put that in, whether, whether there was discussions with the Planning Board at the time, I'm, I don't know, I wasn't here, but you know, sometimes fences are required in lieu of plantings when setbacks are limited in certain districts and various communities, so. I mean, it's, it's an appropriate type of remedy, particularly since this is already built out like this, for them to, you know, replace and or repair the fences needed, so.
Okay, thank you very much, and I have one last question, and I'll let you guys move on. On these, to the, the two handicap spots that are to the north of the circle, are, it looks like on the plan that the first spot is handicapped, and now the second spot will be hand, like, are there three handicap spots there? Or we just have, gonna have two with the new plan?
So there are three, three here. There's two there, there's two existing, now there's gonna be three, we're adding one next to it.
Good, because we need more. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Do any other Planning Board members have any comments or questions? That said, Mark, would you recommend us approving this plan with the one change of the condition of repairing or replacing the fence?
Yes, I would recommend this be approved with the one condition on the fence.
Okay. So that said, I make a motion to recommend approval of the new site plan for 183 Rhode Island Road with the one condition that they repair or replace the damaged fence along the north edge of the parking lot.
Oh, um.
Go ahead, Mark.
One other question. Should you condition removal of some, of, of large bushes and in order to improve the site distance exiting the property? Because there's not a quote landscape plan that is submitted, really, so.
Mr. Drake, would you like to speak to that? I know we did speak about that at our last meeting. And you, you did say that, however, it does make sense to kind of belt and suspenders that happening?
Yeah, we were planning on that, because when you, when you span those radiuses from 20 to 30, there's gonna be a lot of grading in that area anyways, and then we were gonna move this down, and there was some I know this, yeah, and there, and plus the Route 79, they're gonna, they're gonna change a lot of grading in that area, if you've seen those plans too, so that's gonna give more better vision, you know, vision in that. We'll do whatever we can on that part of the property too, if you want to add that add that in, because we want to, you know, to be a safe.
Yeah, there are a couple pine trees to the left, as you're exiting, which would be, I guess, east, that do kind of obstruct the view in, in that direction, or limit the sightline to the, to the west, it's, it's much better, but.
So to my existing motion, I'd like to just add the additional condition to have the sightlines cleared up with only low plantings within, you know, maybe 15 feet of the property edge in both directions. When I say 15 feet, 15 feet off the road, I want to have a clear line of sight.
Okay.
So I have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor. Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. Good luck, Mr. Drake, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is Form A lot on 33 Myrick Street. I believe we have two folks here to speak to that. Who would like to go first? And please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Bob Lucy, I produced the plan for Dean's Point Survey for Tony Morris and Stu Burnham is here with us, he's planning on purchasing lot two, as shown on the plan from Mr. Morris. It's a pretty straightforward division plan, both lots meet the criteria zone. And that's about it. Anybody who has any questions?
Oh, Mark, I assume you got a chance to review this plan, my understanding is it does comply with the A and R standards for Lakeville. Do you agree with that?
Yes, yes, and I reviewed it with the Building Commissioner Nate as well, so.
Yeah, I think you did actually, this is a revised plan. It was an adjustment to the original front yard circle on the plan, the location of it, Mr. Lucy?
Yeah, that's correct. Wasn't really sure exactly where those circles needed to be shown, so I, I talked with Nate, and he suggested I push them up to meet the front lot line with his show.
Very good. Do any other Planning Board members have any comments? So that said, Mr. Byrne, would you like to say anything, or are you good?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to endorse the Form A plan for 33 Myrick Street for lot one and two. As.
Motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor. Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I don't want to delve too far into the next three items, as much as have a brief discussion, everybody voiced their concerns to Mark, as far as we've got, all three items are the, this change of the sign by law. We've been talking about design standards, as well as the C review project. Mark, did you get a copy of the signed by law amendments that we made?
Yes.
And Michelle, is, is that one that we have in our packet, the most current one?
Um, you know what, the one in the packet is just still including that white and black coloring, because I think you and I just, we discussed it a little further and decided that it's a little bit too stringent, so we took that.
We actually did talk about it last meeting, Peter was aware of that, that we removed it. So, that said, do you have any questions for us after reading that over, Mark? And as far as our intent, what we're trying to do, and if it achieves that?
Um, yes, I have, I've read it over, I believe it achieves that, but I do have some questions about some of the various things in here. So the first thing you do is you have a definition of an electronic message board sign, which I think is, and you say that a billboard's anything greater than 64 square feet. Those are pretty straightforward. I, I do have a question about sign prohibitions. You say static images which refresh one three times a minute. So what, what was used to determine that standard? There are some signs like that in town, or was that just a kind of a discussion?
So after looking at that, is, is refresh the right word, Michelle, or did we change that?
I think we said static images which change more than three times in one minute. And I believe the reasoning behind it is that if you're, if you're driving, you know, the 20 second image is fairly a good amount of time to not be distracted as you're driving by.
Okay. Part of that also is, and I think some signs in town are in violation of the existing by law, not just these changes, but it was, we're trying to also eliminate animation.
Right.
So that if somebody wanted to advertise something for sale, that the, the image would stay up for so many seconds before it could change. Again, to Michelle's point, to, to not have somebody so distracted by the changes when they're driving, but also to not look like it's flashing and or animated.
Okay.
So I'm gonna add one, Mark, can I add one more?
Look, I just want to bring Mark up to speed also, and that, the word refresh there. If you look up by definition, I think that the faster the refresh rate, better one of those signs is considered, but that's so that it doesn't look like it's blinking, it looks more animated. So that's why we eliminated the refresh word, and we replaced it, which we'll get you a copy of that most recently amended one, that just says image changes.
Okay.
The only thing I was gonna add to your, to your comments is just that, you know, for, for over 20 years now, the community has been loud and clear that they want to maintain the rural character of the community, so I think part of our thoughts are also, is as increasing signage appears, how can we balance the business need with maintaining that rural character, so I just wanted to add that piece, thank you.
So going through, anything else, Mark?
Yeah, well, the next thing is 100 lumens. How, do we know how bright 100 lumens is compared to less or more? Do we, I mean, how'd we get to that 100?
Um, I did a little I did some research on it, and I did share a document regards to lumens, and I'm trying to pull it up right now.
Okay.
So it says 100 lumens is considered bright enough for most walkways, including commercial properties, 100 lumens is equivalent to about 20 watts. And then it says, you know, 100, 1,000 lumens, you know, could, could definitely irritate your vision. And a typical LED headlamp puts out roughly 50 to 100 lumens, so those were the items that we thought seemed relatively fair for a sign.
Okay.
Is, is there something that you would recommend, though?
Well, it's, it probably isn't very bright, 100 lumens for a sign, that's let's say 20 feet up in the air and you're, it's setback from the or up on the building that's setback, 100 lumens may not be a very bright sign. Like a lot of lights you buy, just standard lights for your home, or anywhere from like 250 to 1,200 lumens, so 100 lumens sign may not be particularly bright, and maybe hard to read. So that's, that's why, now is that for internally illuminated signs?
Yes.
Okay, alright. So that's my only thing, we can talk.
Look that up. Was the lumens thing for just the electronic message boards, or for all signs, Michelle?
Um, yeah, I think it was just under prohibition saying that it couldn't be higher than that.
Which would be any type of lighted sign?
Correct.
So, Mark, I would say, yeah, if you wanted to do some research and just make sure that we're not making everybody shut their sign off.
Yeah, I mean, I, I clearly understand we don't want these super bright signs, you do see them from time to time, or along the highway, those giant message boards that you can see for miles. But we do still want our businesses to be able to, you know, be seen, so.
There's definitely ones in town that are near blinding at night.
There are, no question, and, and Mark, the north side of Lakeville where we're doing all the current development, it stresses us out, I'm just letting you know. We drive down, and we know the development's coming, it still stresses us out. We need to maintain the rural character, so I don't know if that comes to a place where like signage is much smaller and not commercialized as much, but I would imagine that would be pretty popular with our community.
Okay, well, that, there would be ways of doing that by perhaps defining how many internally illuminated signs you can have, try and encourage wood signs, painted signs, lit with spotlights, those kind of things. And to try and make it look more standard, commercial, highway strip type signage. So we could, you know, work on things like that, still not necessarily diminish the size of the signs, because you still want to support your businesses, but you can try and encourage and write things in to have better signage, you know, that's less offensive and less in-your-face type signage, so. The next question I had was just that, we're missing a word at six under the, at the bottom of the page, says or 20, it should say or 20 feet from the surrounding grade. Six. Just missing a word, at least the draft I have.
What, um, what number are you?
6632. Right at the bottom page I have.
Oh, no, it's, okay, it should say it, maybe it got cut out, because I do see it. 20 parentheses, 20 from surrounding grade, whichever is less.
Yeah, but you should add the word feet.
Oh, okay, yep.
Then the next comment I have is on the next page, which is 6645. Has to do with those little entry and exit signs. My question, first question was the black background and white lettering, but you already said that you discussed that, and you're gonna strike that.
And you're striking it from those signs as well, so those are, he's talking about the designated entry and egress from parking areas. So they're supposed to be directional only, we do have some in town that were trying to, there were businesses, they were trying to include their logo and add additional marking, marketing along with the signs, so we were trying to keep it very straightforward. I didn't remove the black and white from that portion.
Oh, okay.
But if, if that needs further discussion, I'm sure we can.
No, I was just kind of curious about why the black and white lettering and.
Well, because we have, we have the sign limitation, so businesses are trying to get around that limitation by adding the marketing to it additionally.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they've, the big companies have always done that, McDonald's has their little arches on their directional signs and.
We don't like that.
Okay.
We don't like it.
So that's why I was, I figured that's why you didn't want the logos and other things there, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, so I do, yeah. So so we have the, the Planning Board being the special permitting authority for signs that require a special permit, unless under 666, it says off-premise signs larger in area and height than specified, or a greater number of signs may be granted by special permit by the zoning board. So why, if the Planning Board's generally the special permitting authority for other types of signs? Other types of signs.
We, we weren't, we put it in, at that's the first time it's been in there is. Where you see it. So maybe we should change. The special permit of the Board of Appeals to the Planning Board as well.
Um, well, that's, I, I think there should be consistency, whether it's. All planning board or all zoning board, but there should be a consistency, um, along with that.
I believe our, I'm sorry, I was just, I believe our, our thought process behind leaving the signs. The, the larger signs and the greater number to the Board of Appeals is because they've dealt with that, um. Typically, but then now that with a site plan review, planning board. Would be looking at the signs and granting the signs. Do you think that that's not?
No, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's not okay, but if, um, there's a greater emphasis now on. Uh, design in the community. Building design, site design, sign design. That perhaps all of those quote design things should kind of come back to the planning board. That's kind of my.
I agree.
So, I mean, I, I typically don't like to see the, involve the planning board with lots of these special permits and. There are things, um, that typically are, are neighborhood issues that are really good for the zoning board to deal with, but. Um, every now and then, certain things are better, um, for the planning board to issue.
Yeah, we, I think we wanted to take over sign thing because it's basically for business development.
So. Um.
Oh, sorry, we interrupt, Mark. Um, before we pass over that.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm curious how, how many, um, sign reviews that the ZBA does. Uh, maybe Kathy would know or, um, like typically, before we, before we take that on. And it's, it's not the additional, uh, work. It's just that, um, the ZBA handles things a, a different way, a very good way. And they're used to, um, certain people coming forward to them with, um, issues. And, um, we don't typically get that. Ours are more black and white. Um. How, how would you say, uh, how many signs do they review, Kathy? Do you know?
I, I mean, it varies, you know, it's been kind of busy, you know, they've done a few. With the, over the last year or so.
Yeah.
Um, so maybe one or two a year.
I, I guess what, is, is, so in not, without beating around the bush, I guess I'll say that, uh. I know people will go before the ZBA with like a hardship type of, uh, situation where we're not really. Um, wired for that here. So if somebody were to say my business is impacted. Adversely because of my sign or because of these restrictions, uh, that's, that, that would be my only, um. Reservation about picking up all of the sign work, you know what I mean? Just a thought.
Make a good point.
Do they do, do they do that? Uh, I mean, is that, is that common or is it pretty much just like, it's just business, you, you know, uh?
Like, do you mean, do they come in with like a really sad story why they have to have this sign?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, obviously they always want the bigger sign, but usually those are pretty heavily attended and in the past, um. The prior ZBA actually really did listen to residents' opinions and. They have kept, you know, case in point, you know, the Dollar Tree, they did not give, grant them much relief on that.
Right, okay.
You know, but this board is a little more stringent. They really have been sticking with the bylaw and they really haven't been giving relief, very little. So.
That's good to know. Thanks.
Alright, um, the next couple questions, more questions I have, um. So the turning off the section, uh, below it, six, six, seven, and then number three. It says shall be turned off during the hours from eleven PM to six AM unless the facility is providing medical care outside of these hours. In which case the applicant shall submit for a special permit. So. So this is also, cuz I've only been here two weeks and haven't been here after eleven, do, do things like the gas station? Up on Main Street, do they stay, do other businesses stay open after eleven? Pizza shops, the bar, that, the pizza restaurant? Um, or does they roll everything up at eleven o'clock here?
Or earlier.
Wish they were open.
Me too. Even on the north side of town, we.
Okay, alright, cuz, and then, alright, so. Um, okay, so then. Then the next one was number five of that same section. Maybe this is what you're talking about. Electronic sign shall be limited to white lights on black background. Is that one of the ones you're talking about removing or?
Yes.
Okay, alright. And I think that is the end of my. That's it. As far as.
Excellent, Kate.
You have, so.
So I, I did actually just email you the other most recent copy, Mark.
Yep.
Um, so if you wanted to go through and. You know, put, put your touch on it and let us maybe circulate it over the next week or two, let us know.
Sure. Sure.
Um. So next item is the design standards. We've talked about this a couple times. Mark, you actually asked me about that, so I think now's a good opportunity to kind of. Get a, an understanding on what everybody's looking for, uh, as far as. And again, I, I talked to you about, we have that density bonus thing, so that if. There's fifty percent lot coverage or greater, that, that triggers architectural design. It's really not clear exactly. Uh, to me, the, the design requirements at that density bonus are not super clear.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that said, um, we've missed a few that I think in our discussion, you had said fifty percent or less and they just. Have their ugly building.
Right.
Uh, so we were looking for a way to catch that as well as I think Barbara has been most vocal in this to try to get. Some sort of a, a rural design that's written into the bylaw.
I mean, yep.
I, I was just gonna say, many years ago, we did, we worked on the master plan and I think the master plan, which I'm sure you've had a look at. Talks a lot about these goals and. I mean, there's a development that's going up now that I probably have thirty phone calls on, um, and it's not even up yet. People are gonna freak out. So I didn't mean to interrupt you, but.
Yeah, um, so it can be, uh, I mean, one can write general. A general paragraph on the goals that you're trying to achieve in reviewing. Uh, building design, commercial building designs, you know, you can say things like, well, with New England. Style buildings using traditional materials such as clapboard siding, cedar shakes, um. Uh, or brick where appropriate, you know, you can say stuff like that. You can say windows shall be broken up. Using mutton bars and, and, and framing so that you don't get, you know, the curtain wall systems and. Um, and, and you can, you know, add maybe a few more sentences and you'll have like a paragraph and people. Developers will be able to read it and understand what you're looking for and it will give you some sort of, um, framework. In order to review and say yes or no by and have some leverage over, um, over the building design now. You can also take that even further and have, you know, and have a, a quite extensive. Um, um, you know, and, uh. Uh, architectural design guidelines where you break down every element and have diagrams and pictures and you could become. But I think that's a little, that, that's something like Nantucket has in place. Um, and I don't think we wanna go quite that far, but I don't know. Today's my first meeting with all of you, so, um. So I, I could certainly work on writing a paragraph or two to kind of give some framework. Um, for, uh, uh, commercial buildings and stuff and also kind of, um. We would then have to discuss where, where it would be applicable, um, if someone is building in the industrial park at large. Warehouse building or distribution center, it may, it wouldn't probably be appropriate to apply that to those. Um, and able to really functionally apply it to, to that kind of building, but in. Perhaps like the Main Street commercial area and other commercial districts. Where you're looking at more retail stores or, uh, service, uh, buildings, um. You know, office buildings and the like, then that, that, um, might be where you apply that.
If I may, um, so what, what you just kind of read off that, that you referred to as a paragraph that, that does sound quite familiar. Because it's, it's similar to what we have for our big box design standards and our current zoning bylaws. And Yarmouth is one that we have, well, I've sent around to the group and we've had a chance to look at. Where they have a full packet of, this is what we, we're looking for, along with diagrams and, and visuals. Um, and I believe it is that we're looking to design those, uh, small business areas. To be more like a Cape Cod sort of feel.
Yep.
So I can definitely forward that to you as well if you'd like.
Sure, yeah.
We had a member on our board many years ago who was on the board for Pete can probably tell us how long zinc was on our board for. Many years before I joined and prior to that, I think he was in Needham, if I remember that correctly, but he. He would warn us against having too strict a design standards and he liked the fact that we had. Um, planned as it is designed right now, or the guidelines as they're designed right now, did have a lot of benefits to driving people to making the decisions that we wanted. So I always appreciated his opinion, but I do think that we have since that time seen a lot of additional development in town. Which ultimately, I feel kind of badly about. I don't, I wish that we had had more control. And I always think back on the surveys that the community, people do these community surveys every year. They answer, what do we want from the town? And that rural character, so like I, I vacillate between what Michelle's saying, which is like, hey, we could get really detailed and, and that's kind of how I want it. But on the other hand, you wanna be, you wanna be, you wanna be business friendly. There's a balancing out there. But at the end of the day, Mark, I think a lot of us that have lived here for twenty plus years feel encroached upon. And they, they haven't even seen the development. It's already been approved. So I think we do need to kind of err on the side more of. Thinking towards how we're gonna protect and limit. To preserve what we, what we have here, which I think most of us is, you know.
Alright. We can work on that.
Um, okay, I, I think that's a good, just to touch base on that and give you a, a starting point, Mark.
Yep.
Um, so the next item on the agenda was the fee review project in which. That's something we've worked on for a couple of months, just to, we figured we, our fees were a bit antiquated.
Mm-hmm.
And with having a planner now, there was a justification. Uh, that the town could actually take in some revenue to cover some of the costs that would, they say offset a salary.
Right.
Uh, and, and I'm not saying it would fully offset, but a portion of maybe. Um, and then in our last meeting, we had discussed. I brought up a point which, um, I guess I'm gonna put a task on you. Um, the, at our last town meeting, the fall town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
There was a change to the gravel removal process in town where it was a change to that bylaw.
Okay.
And you'd have to read it cuz there were some exemptions, but one of the exemptions. To a gravel removal permit was if it was an already permitted project.
Mm-hmm.
Which tells me if we had a subdivision or a site plan review come through the planning board. We would permit the work and then. If we don't have something in our fee schedule, the town would get nothing if gravel was removed.
Okay.
So, and I, I'm not looking to step on the selectman's toes as much as I don't want something to be. Yeah, I think the bylaw that we approved at town meeting was a fine bylaw, but. I think there were a few holes in it that we need to make sure that we close them before there's a, a problem where we have three hundred thousand yards of gravel leave town. As part of a subdivision and hey, they got a lawyer and said it was already permitted, so there's no fifteen cents a yard coming back to the town.
Okay, sure. Um. Alright, I can, um, you know, look into that and figure out how to, um, how to apply it. I mean, obviously they'll have to be. There's always a little dirt coming and going on a site, you know, if it's, um. As they bring, if they have to level certain areas, but if it's fairly significant, um, you know, they're leveling a hillside. In order to get a bill, you know, build a level site for building and parking, um, there's a lot of material that'll be removed, so.
Yeah, and, and so what we had sort of done in the past was to require an, um. Existing conditions plan and then an as-built when done, so that the calculation could be done. Of what was removed based on the change in elevation, where engineers have software that can do that. Um, and that could just be a standard requirement for development like that.
Okay. Alright, I'll, uh, I'll see what some other towns do.
Okay.
Do anything at all, so.
Um. And so not to put us going backwards, but did, did you get a chance to look at the fee schedule draft that we have?
Um, I did kind of look through it. It's certainly, uh, more robust than what you had before. Um. It probably should, I did not compare it to other communities to see if it's kind of within the. Um. Uh, you know, framework of what, um, is, seems to be common practice, so, um.
I think we did use three communities that we felt we were similar to.
Okay.
To get to where we're at there.
Right.
But, y- you know, nonetheless, if you could, I'm not trying to put you on the spot with as much as, with this exercise. Of, I, I'd like to, if we, if there's a spot to put in the gravel removal thing, because we could keep that income coming into the town.
Right.
And then go over the rest of it and we'd like your blessing from it if you think that's where we should be.
Okay.
Alright, moving on. Uh, we have a zoning board of appeals petition, um. Did everybody get a chance to review that? It looks like a garage within the setbacks in a residential, uh, zone. Typically, we don't make any recommendations, uh, would you, everybody agree to that on this one?
Yep.
Yeah.
You on board with that, Peter?
I am, yep, sorry. Um, need a motion of, uh, no comment from the planning board?
Well, I just wanna just run that by Mark too before we act, cuz, uh, we've got him here, so we're gonna take advantage, Mark, uh. Over the past couple of years, if it's just been a straight up residential thing, you know, uh, like there's some really small communities. They're not small communities, but there are communities with very small lots, non-conforming lots now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that the zoning board appeals is always looking at these things and we've made it a, a practice to kind of stay out of those. If it's a business thing, we, we may send comment, uh, would you say that that's prudent?
Yes, yeah, generally in, in all the other communities I've been involved in zoning board. Uh, things, uh, particularly things for, um, variances for setbacks or height or other. You know, changes to residential dwellings are really never sent to planning board for comment. I mean, things that, that are development related such as, um, forty Bs. Might get sent over for, for comment and, and, and the like, but so not making a comment on this is not unusual.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, Peter, if you would make a motion?
A motion that the planning board has no comment on, um, this, uh, ZBA application. A motion that the planning board has no comment on, um, this, uh, ZBA application.
Second motion and a second. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, motion carries unanimously will send no comment or that we make no comment on. Uh, the three hundred Pond Lane. ZBA petition. We have two sets of minutes in the agenda to approve. Did everybody get a chance to review them? I know there was some absences. On the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes. Looks like Barbara, you weren't present on that one. Everybody else was. Anybody else have any comments on those or any corrections or typos they caught?
Looks good to me.
So I make a motion to approve the planning board minutes for Thursday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Barbara, do you want me to call on you for an abstention?
Alright, no, I'm abstaining.
Uh, so motion carries with the majority. And next, we had a really small me, meeting with the three of us. December nineteenth, I did review these. I was satisfied with them. Um, Michelle or Peter, you feel the same?
I do, yep.
Yes, was it December nineteenth or ninth?
Uh, ninth.
Ninth.
They say nineteen? I bet if it said nineteen. So, uh, make a motion to approve the planning board minutes for Thursday, December ninth, twenty twenty-one, as drafted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself. Uh, Barbara and Jack abstained because they were absent from that meeting, so motion carries with the majority. Moving on, um. Kathy, I have, uh, the decision in our packet for Bud's Goods.
Yeah, I've just been throwing it in there because you just, you had made comments on it, so it's just for your information if you wanted to check out. How the decision was and the conditions that were on it.
Excellent. I appreciate you putting it in there. Our next meeting will be January twenty-seventh at seven PM. And. The only other thing I saw was, uh. There was a Department of Housing thing that I'm guessing, Mark, you asked that to be circulated to the board members?
Um, uh, I'm not sure. Oh, yeah, um, perhaps, is this the, um, for the multifamily zoning?
Mm-hmm.
Or, okay, yes, I think I had Kathy send that around. So.
You want to talk about that at all tonight?
Yeah, if you want, I'll do review it just briefly so that you're aware of some of the more details, um.
Right ahead, yeah.
So about a year ago, the legislature passed a, um. Uh, a, a bill that authorizes, uh, DHCD to put together guidelines. Um, to require, uh, communities, commuter rail communities or MBTA communities to. Uh. Uh, uh, create zoning for multifamily by right. Uh, and, and authorized the state, the DHCD to write certain guidelines. And these, um, multifamily by right, um, can pass a town meeting with a majority vote only. And so generally, the, the requirements are for the, the community to create the zoning. That allows for. Multifamily by right at certain densities and a certain size of, of, uh, land area. But it doesn't mean that you have to actually build it or facilitate its development. You just have to create the zoning. So with the huge housing shortage in the Commonwealth. I believe they figured this, if, if every community does what they're supposed to do. It will create the opportunity for something like two hundred and fifty thousand new units to be built around transit stations. Uh, in, um, uh, the MBTA communities. Um, so the parameters for that are the area. It needs to be a minimum of fifty acres. It needs to be a minimum of fifteen units per acre as far as its density goes. Um, and it needs to be either a half a mile from the train station or bus station. Or, uh, some other place where there's reasonable access to public transit. Um, or, uh, in it like a downtown where there's businesses and shops and, and that type of stuff. So you can split up your areas if you have those types of areas in your community. Um, we are a MBTA community because we do have the Lakeville train station. And if, if it moves, it's moving, you know, uh, a quarter mile into, uh, into, uh. Middle borough, so we're still subject to that. Um, if we do not go forward with this, we become ineligible for. A variety of state grants, including kind of the most popular one is Mass Works, which is utilized for road improvements. For economic development and, and other public facility improvements, so. Um, it's, it's, they've kind of picked a bunch of grants that are important for development. Um, that communities will still want to become eligible for. They haven't released all the, the, all the nuts and bolts of the, uh, of the requirements. But that's kind of an outline of, of what they're requiring. So our primary area that we would have to look at would be the area around the existing train station. And that intersection right by the, the, you know, where the state hospital is and the gas station. CBS and all that land there. It doesn't mean that you have to change the underlying zoning district. This is the thing is that we have that, those areas primarily zoned for business and, um. Yeah, mostly business and maybe some industrial, um, and then some other residential.
The smart growth overlay district is right behind there too.
Yeah, so again, we only. You know, we, we don't have to zone the whole area, but we need to go kind of over. You know, that, the assessors' maps and see what's there. And, and ideally, what I'd probably recommend at this early stage is that we do it as an overlay district. So that the underlying district can still be developed. Um, for example, behind the gas station is, um, like a rental place for equipment on a pretty big lot. So if another business in that zone business wanted to go in there and develop, they still could. But it could be also developed into, you know, an apartment building, let's say. So because that's probably within that radius from the train station, so. Uh, by creating the overlay district, it gives the opportunity and meets the standard for the state, but it still allows. The underlying zoning to still be in place, so, um. So that's kind of the, the, the quick, um, story of what they, they, uh, released so far. So, um, yeah, there's, there, they, they will be some other technical assistance grants. I'm not sure, you know, they'll probably go through the Regional Planning Agency to assist communities. I don't know how useful that'll be for us, but, um, and those will be probably, uh, late spring. Uh, those will be available, so they're really looking for communities to kind of get, begin to. Um, work on this, you know, uh, over the summer and the fall and try and adopt it shortly thereafter. So, so it's something to be aware of and we'll, you know, discuss it further.
Very good. I appreciate the update.
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Sure.
Right ahead.
Um, so it did say in here that, um, limitations imposed by, uh, section forty, chapter one thirty-one and title five. Of state environmental code, um, most of Lakeville doesn't have, uh, city water or sewer. So are there any limitations, especially when you're talking fifteen units per acre? That's very dense for a lot of septic systems. Is there anything, uh, leeway that we can, um, use as far as title five? To, um. Because, a- and not only, uh, the title five, but we have a lot of wetlands as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think that they would still need to comply, um, with the requirements of title five. And, uh, you know, setbacks for wells, um, so we may not have a lot of land. That could be developed in lots, to lots of, um, and not just Lakeville, many other communities may, may have. Uh, some difficulty, but it doesn't mean that we can't try and, uh. You know, create the zone at that density and if it, um, I mean. DHCD indicated that they will be reviewing the proposals from, in approving them. So, uh, but that's what they haven't released yet or even probably, uh, put together is, is, um. Exactly what is their review standards gonna be, so. Um, so yes, that could impact the area that you, uh, zone. For this development, these developments, um, so, I mean, clearly, yeah, you. It, it may be a limiting factor, so.
So, and I know, um, you're on the board's selectman meeting on Monday and I was, I just wanted to share with the other board members in case they missed it. Um, you know, Rich was quoting some figures about new, new housing units in Lakeville. And so in, in twenty nineteen, sixty-seven units were built, fifty-three of which were forty-B or R-related. So that's seventy-nine percent of the units built were forty-B or forty-R. In, um, twenty twenty, it went from sixty-seven units in twenty nineteen to seventy-eight units in twenty twenty. Sixty-seven, which were forty-B, forty-R related. And then twenty twenty-one, we had a hundred and five units built with eighty-three, which were forty-B or forty-R related. So I just wanted to share that information. We have had incredible growth in town over the last few years and. Um, it's a shame that the state is forcing this on us and, you know, and using these very valuable grants that I know. We are planning on using, um, I would like to urge our town hall to possibly. Not have to use these grant funding in the future and, um, avoid having to comply. Because I don't know if this will pass at town meeting, you know, um, I think there's a lot of people, I mean, I'm working on bringing a CPA. Uh, to Lakeville with another group and, um, I think that's, that's part of the drive is to try to protect the rural charm. And we're seeing it disappear at a very fast rate, so I just wanted to throw that out.
Thank you. Anyone else want to say anything, uh, before we conclude tonight's meeting?
Although the other times, Mark, we can always catch up at the next meeting.
Well, we can catch up after the meeting's adjourned.
There you go.
Not during. If there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, the, the only other comment I would have is that if there are other, um, projects. That the board members would like me to try and work on and maybe kind of, then we could discuss it other meetings. You know, feel free to give me a call or send me an email and, and, uh, we can discuss those as well.
I would love to get your email. I didn't see it on the town website.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, it is M. Resnick, R.E.S.N.I.C.K. At lakevilleMA.org.
Alright, very good.
Well, Mark, one thing I'll just give you advice on with our community and we're very excited to have you. We've worked a long time to try to get a planner. It was in our plan twenty years ago to try to get some help. We're very, very happy to have you. Um, I would say that Lakeville, and I think everyone on this board would agree, we're pretty homogeneous down here. We're, we're pretty much all on the same page on the majority of things. And so when you see that maybe only two hundred people have responded with, on a survey to answer a question a certain way. That's still probably the, you know, more than the mean than, than, than the offset, so. I just, if you haven't already looked at those, I highly recommend that you look at them. And it's always, it's also interesting to go back and look at them historically, because you'll see those threads of consistency that seem to be here. All the way around and those are the things that as an elected person I look to fulfill, um, is whether I agree with it or not agree with it. Um, is, is try to live up to that, so that's it. Nice to meet you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, uh, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.